Okay, it is 5:35 and I'd like to call this special meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin? Ms. Marlin? Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. Is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Apparently not. So, we will move on to council orientation and training. And we have Jim Simon, our city attorney, who is going to lead this discussion.
Thank you. I'd like to start out on behalf of the Legal Division welcoming our three new council members.
Thank you.
And thank you for your strong willingness to serve our wonderful city. And for those four members who are returning, likewise, thank you and for your years of service as well. The Legal Division is here to serve the city as well as the city council. And most of you have already begun bombarding the city with requests and legal opinions, and hopefully, we have been able to oblige you. Maybe not always with the answers we'd like to have, but at least give some legal guidance. Generally, our goal is to provide high-quality, professional, ethical representation for the city. And therefore, we obviously have to respond to a certain higher authority that governs the legal profession, mainly the Illinois Supreme Court, and the ethics which the Attorney Registration Discipline Commission imposes upon us and which we willingly follow. Generally, we provide opinions and advice to the city, both staff, elected and appointed officials. We represent the city in transactional matters and litigated matters, whether directly or working with outside counsel. Number of matters we work with outside counsel on rather than handling matters such as personal injury matters or civil rights litigation where our insurance carrier selects outside counsel to represent the city. We review, revise, draft, and render opinions on ordinances, policy, procedures, contracts of all different types. We also assist in enforcing ordinances and, you know, dealing with violations. We have a very active ordinance violation court here in Champaign County, and we spend one day a month in what we call OV Court. Typically, Michelle Brooks, one of our assistant city attorneys, will handle those matters, and we'll have upwards to 100 matters each time we appear involving collection of fines and fees. We also get involved with collecting past due obligations where we have to file claims in small claims court and prosecutor claims in small claims court. And if the amounts reach a certain threshold, they might go to a higher or a larger division in the Circuit Court, the law division in the Circuit Court. We also interpret ordinances, rules, policies, procedures, and agreements involving just about any matter you could think that the city might be involved in. And of course, we provide formal opinion letters to our auditor and on occasion to our insurance carrier regarding risk assessment and potential liability, if any. Needless to say, those of you who have used our services, and you all will sooner or later, as well as staff, we are involved in a great diversity of matters. So who does all this work? We have five full-time equivalent employees, myself, two assistant city attorneys, Kurt Borman and Michelle Brooks, and two terrific legal assistants, Indee Boucher and LeAnn Augustus. Jack Waller, who most, if not all, of you know, served in the position of city attorney for decades. He serves as an outside counsel on a contract basis for the city and has provided all of us with a huge wealth of his experience, especially his institutional experience. The law is always evolving, so he provides a wonderful foundation and background in areas that one of us may not have as much experience as he has. In fact, I would say he's probably the dean of municipal law in the state of Illinois. Many people look to him for their thoughts and opinions. What governs our activities is a hierarchical series of loosely called laws. Obviously, U.S. Constitution, state constitution, state and federal statutes, state and federal regulations. Our own city ordinances govern what we do and what you all do here in the city, city policies and procedures, and administrative opinions often issued by the Illinois Attorney General, Illinois Department of Revenue, the Internal Revenue Service, and just about any other state or federal administrative agency that issues opinions. And then finally, we have our common law, which most people know as case opinions or case law. I want to talk about a couple of issues that are clearly and directly relevant in a general sense to the city council. One, our favorite issue that crops up periodically is the Open Meetings Act. You all are required to take training in the Open Meetings Act, including those who have served in the past, because the Open Meetings Act provides that council members and appointees of commission boards and committees are to take the training each time they are elected or appointed. After that, elected officials and appointed officials who are not designated as Open Meeting Act officials, if you want to call it that, do not have to take training every year during their term. But upon reelection, you are required to take the training. The Open Meetings Act applies to the council, committee of the whole, and every commission, board, or committee that is created, whether it's a special committee for a single purpose or whether it's a standing commission. They all must comply with the Open Meetings Act. And there are essentially two issues for compliance. One, what is a meeting? And two, what is a public body? I just described what the statute defines as a public body. It's basically any council, board, commission, committee, subcommittee, et cetera, that's supported by taxpayer dollars. What's a meeting? The Act defines a meeting as a confluence, in its loosest sense, of three or more, for our purposes, for the council, three or more individuals, three or four members, or basically, if you, in our case, it's three because we have seven members, and the definition of a meeting is a quorum, a majority of a quorum. Quorum here is four, a majority is three. The statute provides other ways of determining a majority of a quorum, but we won't get into that. If necessary, we can consult the statute. The problem is what constitutes a meeting beyond just the confluence of three or more people? In other words, what is the confluence? And the statute uses a phrase, and it's pretty unique in the United States, and that is a contemporaneous, interactive communication involving three or more members. Neither contemporaneous, interactive, or communication is defined within the statute. Contemporaneous through normal dictionary definitions has actually two definitions. One is simultaneous and the other is within a period of time, i.e., not simultaneous. Interactive, most dictionaries kind of look at it from a computer sense, but interactive, again, can be simultaneous interaction or within a period of time. And then communication is the exchange or imparting of information, ideas, discussion, what have you. Unfortunately, there is no case law or Attorney General opinion or public access counselor opinion on what is, quote, "contemporaneous, interactive exchange." And some of you have raised the issue, what about emails? Well, what happens if I don't use the Reply All feature in the email system? Or if I don't use Forward in the email system? What happens if I BCC, Blind Carbon Copy, one of two members? Does that constitute a meeting? I tend to take a conservative approach because why go down a road, shall we say, not well-marked or not well-lit? And my advice is always, if there are three or more people involved in an email exchange or a text message exchange, it constitutes a meeting. It's difficult to avoid that concept, but given the fact that contemporaneous and interactive deal also deals with periods of time, if a series of communications occur involving three or more council members involving a matter of city business, of course, it is my opinion that a meeting is occurring. And of course, when a meeting occurs, you have to deal with notice, timely notice, agendas, public's right to input. At every meeting that is considered a public meeting, i.e., the confluence of three or more, for purposes of the council, three or more members, you must provide an opportunity for public input. And the council does that, and the committee of the whole does that routinely, and you can and have established certain rules to govern that input. The rules are typically members, public members can, you know, provide five minutes' worth of input. If there becomes an overly sizable number of people who want to have input, rules provide that that amount of time can be cut down to three, three minutes. Closed meetings. The statute, as you know, favors open meetings. The policy is conducting the public's business in the sunshine. However, there are exceptions to closing meetings, such as to talk settlement of litigation, to set price in a real estate transaction, to deal with collective bargaining. We all, in essence, experienced some of that very recently. The Act states, though, that those exceptions that are provided in the Act will be strictly construed in favor of open rather than closed meetings. So when you want to close a meeting, you are required to state, as you all do, that the reason for the meeting. You don't have to say, "We want to discuss setting the price for the sale of property located at 1234 South," give a name, "street," because obviously now you've disclosed what the discussion's about. But you can say, "I move that the meeting be closed to discuss the sale of city property" or "the purchase of property" or "collective bargaining" or "litigation." It can't be, in terms of litigation, it can't be some possible theoretical litigation. It must be either imminent, threatened, or pending. In closed meetings, you can't take any final action. You must reconvene the open session of the meeting and then vote on the final action. No final action can be taken during a closed meeting. Obviously, the rules of procedure for you all in committee of the whole and the council is Robert's Rules of Order, and I have supplied some information where the council has varied that. Council doesn't always adhere precisely to Robert's Rules of Order, and that's okay because the purpose of Robert's Rules is to give everyone an opportunity to speak on the council, but without any one person dominating a council meeting. My suggestion for you all to make the meetings efficient and to determine whether it's even worth having discussion is that before any discussion on an action matter occur, there should be a motion and a second. If nobody moves, you know, other than deciding, do you want to move something on the council? But if nobody makes a motion, why spend your time discussing? If nobody makes a second, it appears that the motion likely wouldn't pass because you can't have a motion without a second. But obviously, we do digress. Councilman Smythe. I corrected myself.
Quick question here is, okay, we have a rule about council members speaking after a motion, you know, debated around a couple of times. Sometimes we need to discuss things for longer than, say, two rounds each or something. And maybe, maybe we want to do it, you know, maybe we don't want to put a motion on the table until we've figured out what it is we want to put a motion on the table. So, so, you know, we don't necessarily need a motion to have discussion or to ask questions of staff and the public.
Well, obviously, if you are asking questions of staff on a report, that's a discussion, that's not an action item. Somebody that a member of the public brings forward, again, is not an action item. But if there's something on the agenda to be voted on, and presumably, you will discuss it because somebody will make the motion and somebody presumably will second it, just so the council members can participate and use the discussion and the information gleaned therefrom to chart their course on how they want to vote. But for parliamentary Robert's Rules, an action matter is not discussed until a motion and a second. Now, if you're comfortable in not following that, and there's a rationale for not following that, I don't think anyone's going to object in terms of adherence to the rules. And frankly, the only people who can contest whether there has been a breach of Robert's Rules is going to be one of you all. It's not a matter of litigation, as long as the matter is legitimately on the agenda, whether it's added in that section that says additions or modifications to the agenda, or if there's a motion properly made, properly seconded, and a proper vote is called, whatever matter is voted upon, whichever way it goes, is a legitimate action. That's not challengeable, unless the action itself is unlawful.
There's one situation that I don't understand exactly how to proceed, and that's when someone calls the question. Theoretically, somebody could speak for five minutes or, and then call the question without anybody else having had a chance to speak.
Theoretically, they could, and then what could happen is that not experiencing a sufficient amount of information to make, to vote intelligently, a majority votes.
Votes it down.
The matter down. That doesn't mean it can't be brought up at some other time. Vote the matter down. I, again, remember the rules of parliamentary procedure. There is one fundamental rule of parliamentary procedure which is not stated in the rules, but the overriding policy is courtesy and respect. And I haven't been here very long, and Jack Waller, who's been here a long time, has never, and we've talked about these issues, has never once indicated that there's been disrespect among council members or trying to foreclose debate on a matter. As long as it's orderly and people have the right to speak without interruption and courtesy is shown, I don't think anyone's going to object. Now, one issue you do bring up that's kind of tangential. What happens when somebody makes a motion to amend a motion? That motion also has to have a second, and then a vote on that motion precedes a vote on the matter, and we've done that. But what happens if somebody moves to amend a motion for an amendment? That's a little trickier. If the second motion to amend doesn't take care of everything in the original motion to amend, you do have to take that motion, that series of motions in lockstep. You vote on the first amendment, or the second amendment, second motion to amend the amendment, proposed amendment, then you vote on the proposed amendment, and if that takes care of the entire matter in the motion, then you don't need a final vote. But if it doesn't, because you're only amending a portion of the original motion, then you've got to take a vote on the original motion. But again, courtesy and respect rule the day in council meetings, and I can't imagine it otherwise with you all. Another issue, you're not often directly involved, but does affect you, especially when you start thinking about budgets and all of that, and that's the Freedom of Information Act. Staff, including legal, but not just legal, staff throughout the city spends a huge amount of time responding to public requests for information under the Freedom of Information Act. And these responses can be simply pulling out a particular piece of paper, which is a record, or a very long, complex analysis of many, many documents for production. Again, the policy is government in the sunshine. There are exceptions to what can be produced, and they are very strictly construed, and they are numerous and not always clear, so we often have debates within, you know, among the staff. Does this fit within an exception? And if so, why? Because when we answer a freedom of information request, we have, if we're going to exempt from production certain information, we have to not only state the exemption that applies, but why it applies, of course, without disclosing the information. The Freedom of Information Act requires a response by the city within a certain specified period of time or a request for an extension that can only be so long. We have to assert exemptions. If we, if we want to claim exemptions, and there's one overriding exemption, and that's the right of privacy, but that's strictly construed. One's name is not subject to privacy, but their social security number, their telephone number, certain other enumerated items in the statute are. So we have to be very careful when we disclose information, especially when somebody's asking for information about employee, staff members, or for that matter, you all, that fit within the privacy area. We have to be very careful. And the process, depending on what's asked, can be long and cumbersome. First thing we have to do is define what the request asks. And not all requests are well-drafted or clearly articulate what the requister wants. Once we divine what the requister wants, which may require some communication with the requister, then we have to pull all the records, I use that word specifically, the records together to respond to the request. Then we have to look through the records to see what might be exempt. Then we have to decide what exemption it falls under. Then if we decide that it is exempt, we have to redact that information in such a form that it cannot be observed once the documents are produced. And then we have to produce the documents typically in the manner requested. I use the word "record" because public record is defined. We are not obligated to create a record. We are not to respond. We do not have to create a compilation or a spreadsheet or an access or a PowerPoint presentation for the information. We are required to produce those records which are in the custody, possession, or over which the city has control, with the exception, of course, exempt records. So that, we, on occasion, get asked to make a calculation. What percentage of property is rental registration as opposed to residential, single-family residential property? If we don't have that specific, you know, that piece of information in a document, we can't provide it because it's not a record. If it's, maybe it's a compilation of documents, we would provide the documents, and then the requister has to make the calculation, him, her, itself. Obviously, the press likes to ask questions about, for example, recently, how we use the Internet. How often do we use the, some of these social sites because they're doing some expose? We have to, within bounds, respond. If we don't, or if we assert an exemption, the requister can request the public access counselor for an opinion. And if we don't like the opinion, they say, "Produce it," and we say, "No." We have a right to go into court and ask the court to interpret the statute vis-à-vis that request. These requests can be long. We recently got done with a request involving information about the police department, which took months with the consent of the requister, to respond within the bounds of the statute. And so, a lot of time and effort is consumed in this process. Yes?
I have a question that, so I have an alias.
A what?
An alias.
An alias.
So that there's a, if somebody writes to me in, you know, with my Urbana City email address, it goes to councileric@gmail.com.
Okay. You've got it, you've got your council email routed to eric@gmail.com?
Yeah, councileric@gmail.com.
Okay.
So if I communicate from that, like, don't think the server in the city has captured that, or?
I don't, I don't know the technical aspects, but let's back up. Let's say three, three of you, let's say Eric, you send out an email to Charlie Carroll and Bill using your own personal email to their personal email. I, you may have called it an alias. Let's just call it personal email. And you start discussing among the four of you by using Forward and Reply All this matter of city business. No, the, the server may not capture it, but whether the server captures information or not is not what's defined as either an open meeting or something subject to the Freedom of Information Act. If you, you all are agents and fiduciaries of the city, so you all have captured it. In terms of record retention, that's another question, what you do with the emails when you're done with it. You know, the city itself has certain record retention requirements, but the fact that you're using personal email does not accept it. And probably the best example, and as I say, again, none of this has been tested in the courts, or with one except, well, not in the courts, with one exception, with the PAC, Public Access Counselor, and that's Champaign. You probably have all read about the council members in the city of Champaign sitting there texting each other with their private cell phones, not going to the city server, but to the, you know, what do you call it, cellular phone system, and they're texting madly. I don't know whether they're making plans for dinner or whether they're discussing a matter that's being discussed right then and there, i.e., parallel discussions, or whether they're on to another matter, and no one else knows. So, the news gazette requested those texts, and Champaign said, "No." And the basis on which Champaign said, "No," was, oh, those are being done through private cellular phones, through the subscription arrangements with the respective cell companies. And the news gazette didn't like that answer. They appealed that for a ruling with the PAC, Public Access Counselor. The PAC officer said, "Uh-uh, produce them." Champaign didn't like it. They challenged that in Circuit Court and lost, and they've taken an appeal to the Illinois Appellate Court, and they just had a public argument, or I should say, oral argument on that issue, May 22 of this year. And one of the judges simply said to the attorney representing Champaign, I believe it went down something like this, "Why don't you just tell your city council to stop it?" That may, that may indicate at least how that judge on the three-judge panel is thinking. So, we may get a ruling. It was brought under Freedom of Information Act, but if you read the two Acts together, they, they do dovetail. Just curiously, there are a number of states that don't have a Open Meetings Act. It's all within the Freedom of Information Act. There are the requirements of open meetings, but it's all under one statute. So, bottom line, I, you know, if you're conducting city business and it's, you know, it's Open Meetings Act if it meets the other elements of number and what you're talking about, and it also probably, we'll find out soon, but it appears to be discoverable based on what's happening so far in Champaign with text messages. And I don't think the fact that the venue of those messages, being in a council meeting, makes any difference.
Yeah, my assumption, if you were to test through a particular email account, that that would be discoverable, but that depends on your until just now, whether or not, you know, I, I had to produce it for it to be discovered, or whether it could already be discovered, or possibly I would have to produce it, if it's something that I have.
Yeah. The bottom line, though, is the Act talks in terms of discussing city business or city affairs, not in terms of the mechanical aspects of how that is done. There's one Law Review article that I'm aware of that was published at the time this contemporaneous interactive exchange, or communication language was included in the Act. And the author's analogy is if you can liken it to either an exchange that occurs in a meeting, which is not meeting, which is not contemporaneous, if you really analyze the breakdown, one member speaks, then another member speaks, and maybe the first member speaks again, or a third member speaks, same happens with emails. They also, he also likens it to a telephone conversation, or a telephone conference, but still, it's not strictly simultaneous. We'd never get anything done because everyone would be talking and nobody would be listening. Somebody speaks on the conference phone, somebody responds, somebody else responds. Versus, you go the other route, on the other extreme, is with letters through snail mail. I mail a letter to Diane, and then I mail a letter to Michael, and maybe one of you responds, maybe the other never gets the letter, and then maybe a couple of you exchange letters about the subject. There are opinions in other states that say, no, that's not discussion of public business. I personally think that that, the distinction doesn't make much sense because we're only talking about time, but they are talking about the same subject, but we don't have that here yet. In any event, it's, it's not the mechanical means or the media. I guess Marshall McLuhan, I think it was, or maybe Newt Minow said, "The medium is the message." Here, it's not the means, it's what's the intent and all. You all, sitting as a council, have two roles. One is a legislative role, which probably occupies probably ninety-eight percent of your time, maybe more, but you also have an adjudicatory role. And, for example, you may be hearing an appeal from a zoning board ruling. Somebody comes and objects. You are going to adopt, or at least consider that ordinance or that ruling, and somebody comes to you to appeal the ruling. Right now, the city council has no formal set process, procedure for handling that kind of an appeal, other than the procedures that are used by our other commissions. So one of the first things you will have to do is adopt a very simple set of rules. Are there going to be opening statements? Is there going to be a formal presentation of evidence? Is it just going to be offering submissions in writing? Is it going to be, you know, unsworn testimony before you, or are you going to require, you know, a little tighter procedures with sworn testimony, evidentiary presentations that are near-court-like quality? That's up to you. Once you do that, then you have to conduct your appeal process, adjudicatory process, as a neutral body, irrespective of the fact that one of our commissions came up with whatever ruling is being appealed. Your obligation is to be neutral and judge the evidence or the information as presented. Thereafter, you may allow for closing or summary arguments, and then you need to deliberate and render a decision. Does not have to be a unanimous decision. It has to be a majority of those sitting on the board or on the council hearing it. But in that adjudicatory capacity, you have to always remember you're wearing a very, very different hat than as a council person. You're not doing motions, you may discuss and debate among one another, but there are no motions, or that part of the Roberts Rules is not applicable. And then at some point, as I said, you will come to a consensus opinion, and will provide the appellant and the appellee with your ruling. From there, they can take it to the next step, which presumably would be a court. But it would be considered an administrative ruling, and reviews by, the courts are covered by the Illinois Administrative Review Act, and it's a much narrower review than if somebody had brought a court case right from the get-go. Yes?
I think we have one of those situations next week.
I think you do.
Yeah, so...
Somebody's going to have to be appointed chairman or chairperson unless our mayor sits in that capacity, and then some basic rules should be adopted. What we've done in legal, we had one, wasn't with the council, we had one involving a, you know, involving fines with a property owner, and we set, we consulted with the chairman of the board, outside person, and the attorney for the appellant, and came up with a consensus on a basic set of rules. They don't have to be complex, they just have to be fair. And fair means each side has the right to be heard, and within respectful reason, some cross-examination or inquiry by the council sitting as an appellate body. It's a little bit more, and I hate to use this phrase because it has a pejorative tone, but rather than our judicial system here in this country, it tends to be a little more inquisitional, i.e., the members of the board ask questions of the presenters. I mean, not, not in a cross-examination, but ask questions to ferret out as much information as they think they need to be able to resolve the appeal. So yes, you'll, you'll need to, I think the first thing you'll have to do is appoint a chairperson, and then presumably, if you want legal involvement, we'd be happy to be involved, of course, work with that, the chairperson on a basic set of rules. You may find yourselves having to, you know, suspend the process next week until all of this can be worked out. Because I, you know, we certainly would, you would certainly would want at least some kind of input from the other side. But ultimately, you have the, you have the right to adopt the rules as long as you want respective of what either side wants, if the rules are fair.
Can, can we get started on that process tonight for next week?
I, I, well, no. In this meeting, unless you add it to the agenda, but this is not covered under your special meetings notice, so I don't think it would be appropriate.
Okay, we can't said, just, we can't, we can't, because I noticed you had a procedure for a semi, you know, for one of...
You can't agree to adopt that procedure in this meeting because it's not an item on this notice.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
It's not on your agenda.
Okay.
This is strictly informational.
Okay. So we can't adopt any of the rules that you suggested, or...
No, but somebody can communicate, one person can communicate, or two people, preferably one can communicate with legal, if that's your desire, and, you know, we can work, and then at the next meeting, that, when you go into that phase of the adjudicatory process, you can adopt rules then.
We have a, an appeal, I think we have a historic preservation issue next week.
You may have two of them. I think you'll have two of them.
Yeah, two buildings are involved.
We actually had a meeting like that before, in the previous city council, so we could look and see how we did it then. We had a meeting on that same topic a few years ago, so we could look and see how we did it then.
Okay.
And if it needs to be improved, we could improve it, but we've done it before.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think, I think we had some rules, but we weren't completely happy with the way it worked out.
I, I will suggest that many, a number of our boards and commissions have rules, and in terms of complexity, and whether they, you know, mere court-type rules, or are much more flexible than court-type rules. There are plenty of processes within the city that can form the basis of rules, but obviously, somebody will have to get in touch with legal if they want us to. Dennis, did you have a question?
In a kind of related topic, I'd like your comments about participation from members of council as individuals in discussions that happen in the commission or, and, you know, you can be drawn, maybe you're following the process of activities at community level, and have evidence, or maybe lots of evidence that will be useful, but if any of those topics actually come to the council itself, as advice, advice to the commissioners, what would you advise for the council?
Let me see if I understand your correct, your question correctly. A council person who serves either on a commission or an advisory?
Not as an individual or chance of being under the board.
Okay, and provides?
I was interested in doing and participating in public...
Let's, let, I think the easiest way is, let's take an example, let's say, let's say there's somebody, let's take legacy tree. Let's say somebody has nominated a tree for legacy tree status, and you, Dennis, wish as somebody who lives next door to that tree, you want to participate and presumably urge the legacy tree commission to designate that tree a legacy tree. And you, in your individual capacity, not as a council member, present information, testimony, opinions, however the commission chooses to operate, and they make a decision. And that decision comes before the council. Your question is, do you have a right to speak as a council member? I would say you do, with one exception. If that in any way benefits you financially by improving the value of your house, or diminishing the value of some other house which would be offset and used as a comparable to show why your house is, you know, priced slightly higher, that might be a conflict. And I'm going to talk about conflicts in a couple of minutes.
Personal...
Huh? If you have personal, financial, and gain, just because you have a personal interest in a matter, that's not what defines a conflict of interest. A conflict is, by our ordinance and by general accepted principles, with lots of exceptions, which I'll talk about one or two. It's, there are two components. One, does it benefit you or affect you directly or indirectly, any different than any other member of the general public, not a subset of the general public? And two, does it benefit you directly or indirectly insofar as your financial interest is concerned? That typically is the standard for conflicts of interest. Applying those is, the statement is easy. Applying conflicts of interest is not easy.
So I may be a tree advocate, and I might want that legacy tree to be nominated. Does that then create, in somebody else's opinion, I have a bias? And so therefore, if I were to then try to be voting upon it as a council member, am I setting up a precondition for an opinion that I have a bias?
I suspect every one of you, at least walking into a council meeting on any matter, if you've reviewed your council packet in advance and have seen the agenda items, will have some kind of a initial bias. But as council members, obviously, you will vote what you think is appropriate on a particular matter. So whether you appeared in that meeting or not, you likely will have a bias in favor of designating trees as legacy trees, and maybe that particular one is a legacy tree. If it doesn't affect the public differently than you, if you are, I should say, if you're not affected by the ultimate decision, any different than the general public, such as it is, good, bad, or indifferent, then that's not a conflict, so long as you do not have any direct or indirect financial interest in, in the matter. Now, if you're a mulch salesperson, or you are the person who crafts the signs...
That's my bad.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I'm sorry to, to unmask you, but if you are the person that makes the plaques, that's something else, then you would have a conflict of interest. Even if those plaques have to go out for bid, and you might likely be a bidder on those plaques, you have a financial, direct or indirect, in that. If your wife makes the plaques, or is a bidder, that's an indirect interest. Diane?
What if the financial impact on you is, is actually negative? You don't benefit from it, but you, you actually end up paying. Is that still considered a conflict?
It's still going to, you still aren't going to be treated in the same manner as the general public.
Okay.
So I've always viewed it as a, as two elements of a test, unless there, as I will talk about in a second, unless there is a statute or a reg, regulation on point.
Sure, I guess, let's go back to the history there. And the first step, Diane was right on this, because the house just in the south of us, Diane and John, you said, oh, there's a fantastic oak tree, which, even if we come down by force of nature, would probably take out both that house and the powerhouse.
Mm-hmm.
So I might, I might feel that I would rather not have that designated as a legacy tree.
Well, but since you've identified a financial interest.
Yeah, so would, this would constitute, I guess, a potential financial interest.
Well, you have a direct financial interest, because if you vote for a legacy tree, that means theoretically, without going through the legacy tree process, well, you wouldn't even have a right to have that tree taken down, because you're not the owner of the property on which the legacy tree sits.
Yeah, no, but I, but I would prefer for there not to be like a community pressure not to take it down.
Well, you would, you would want no legacy tree status, so hopefully, you could cajole the owner to recognize if that tree comes down, it's going to take out not, not only your house, but his house or her house.
But, but in any case, I shouldn't vote on that as a council person.
If you have a financial interest, you know, a perceived financial interest, again, you know, I take always either the safer or the more conservative route, and suggest you declare your conflict of interest and recuse yourself.
Could I communicate to the...
Can you what?
Could I communicate to the council as a private individual?
Now, that, that's a hard one. I don't have an answer to that, because obviously, you will, you would be participating in discussion, and the conflict of interest process is not limited to voting on or taking action. It involves discussion deliberations. Even in a situation where there might be competition, and it's highly speculative whether your side is going to win the competition or not, in discussing what the other competition is doing, you should recuse yourself, because that may redound to your financial interest.
Sure, but could I speak in public participation, and then absent myself during the actual deliberation?
That's a hard one, because our Open Meetings Act allows all members of the public to speak, and the last time I checked, despite your council membership position, you are a member of the public, so I guess, but maybe the answer is, is that your communication occurred during the general input, and not when that particular agenda item comes up. Again, trying to be conservative.
Okay.
And all. But I also think you'd have, you know, in your, you'd at the very least have to disclose your potential conflict.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I...
I mean, as long as you're not deliberating on the council, and as long as you're not discussing and trying, other than making your statement, and obviously, as long as you're not voting, you are a member of the general public. I'll be honest, I've not seen any law or PAC opinions, or anyone else's opinions on that particular, other than you being a member of the general public.
Okay.
Any other questions while we're, now that we're delving into conflicts, but before we do, any other questions on some of these other issues? Let's talk about conflicts. You, I've indicated that I look at it in two analyses. One, would you be benefited differently than the general public, not a subset of the public? And two, would you, do you have a financial interest? Conflicts come in if you have a personal direct interest or an indirect interest. And what that means is, if you, your spouse, your child, your parent, your grandparent, your sibling, or any, all of them have an interest, even if you personally don't, there is a conflict of interest. And the better part of valor is to disclose the interest. You may not want to disclose the underlying facts of the interest, you may simply want to say, "I have a conflict of interest, and I choose to recuse myself from the discussion and any action on the item." But, the problem with conflicts of interest is they are as varied as every single issue. We do have our ethics ordinance, and I encourage you to review that. It's the last section in Chapter Two of the Urbana City Code, so I urge you to review that. And a lot of conflict of interest issues are resolved by looking at that ordinance, and then looking at the common law. But there are some very specific statutes and regulations that address conflicts of interest. For instance, let's take the legacy tree program. Other than our ordinance, or to my knowledge, there are no statutes or, or regulations, state or federal, on when you have to disclose a conflict in connection with the legacy tree program. However, we know that... Other than our ordinance, or to my knowledge, there are no statutes or, or regulations, state or federal, on when you have to disclose a conflict in connection with the legacy tree program. However, we know that Mike owns an establishment that has a liquor license. He must, under state statute, the Illinois Liquor Control Act of nineteen thirty-four, he must recuse himself, not because of the council ordinance, though that would apply too, but the statute provides for recusal. The TIF district statute requires recusal of certain property owners who own property, not a single-family residence in which they live, their residence, but if they rent a single-family residence in a TIF district, and, and the issue of the TIF district comes up, there's a, a strong, and when you read it, somewhat quirky, difficult to interpret provision regarding, well, can you buy property within a TIF district after it's designated? If you own property within a TIF district before, or to, to be designated TIF district, the statute governs. And so, it all depends on what the specific facts are. If, for instance, we are, we as a city are going to fund something using HUD funds, whether it's a social service agency or something else, the regulation, federal regulation on block grants governs that. If the city does not co-mingle the HUD funds, then the HUD ban on participation, i.e. their conflict of interest regulation, doesn't apply to the non-HUD funds. Now, granted, the city ordinance might apply, and one's ethics might apply, but the HUD ordinance doesn't. But the HUD ordinance provides that if the funds are co-mingled with the city funds, all funds in the pool, whether they are HUD-sourced or otherwise, have to be treated using the HUD conflict of interest regulation. It applies, you know? So, it may benefit you if we're not discussing, let's say it has something to do with buying something with HUD funds, and you happen to have an ownership interest, but we're not discussing your bid, but somebody else's bid to do that job, you have to recuse yourself, because obviously, if you can convince the council not to accept the other bid, you have a better chance because of the competition. So, there are a, a number of statutes that one must consult when it comes to dealing with conflicts of interest. I think the most important way of beginning your own personal assessment of conflicts is to think, will I somehow be affected differently than the general public in the city? If yes, then you need to think about, I'm not saying you do have a conflict necessarily, you need to think about it. Or if you get that feeling in your stomach that, mm, I'm not sure about this one, I suggest, give us an email, give us a call, and we'll walk you through it. That's basically it. Any questions? We look forward to continue working with you, and I have to admit, we are very proud to be your legal division.
Well, if there are no questions for Jim, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.